Good afternoon, esteemed school board members, Dr. Cashwell, staff, and all participating in our March 14, 2024 Henrico County School Board Work Session. Colleagues, thank you for all you do to service your districts and Henrico County Public Schools as a whole. Your participation in our work sessions marks a commitment to fostering positive change and advancing the future of learning. The first item on our agenda is the Agenda Approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. The first item I have for the board is a review of our proposed 2025-2026 school year calendar, looking to the future. Again, so that those who are watching are not confused, this is not for the next school year, but 2025. So Mrs. Coy, our Chief of Staff, will provide the overview.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Atkins, Vice Chair Shea, Dr. Cashwell, and members of the board. This afternoon, I am pleased to bring you a presentation about the development of the 2025-2026 calendar for your initial review and consideration. The development of calendar recommendations is a collaborative effort that includes a wide variety of stakeholders and a great deal of input. Our HCPS Calendar Committee began meeting last fall to initiate conversations on this 25-26 calendar, to shape the community survey, and to develop recommendations. Additionally, this year, more than 1,200 individuals participated in our community survey on the topic. We are incredibly grateful to our teachers, principals, parents, and even students who weighed in via many different mechanisms to help inform the recommendations. So thank you to each of you for your time and consideration. As HCPS approached this calendar development cycle, there were a few topics that were at the forefront of our conversations. As always, we asked our stakeholders what they like and don't like about our current approaches. This helps us affirm some of our ongoing practices and flag some that may no longer be serving us well. Additionally, this was the second year in which we requested feedback around a staggered start. We sought feedback as well on our professional learning days, of which there are now three this current school year for the first time. And then finally, as we have in recent years, we sought feedback on our wellness days as they become an established part of our calendars. This year's community survey was available in English and Spanish throughout January and February. We were really pleased to see an increase in participation this year with more than 1,200 respondents. However, we also, at the same time, recognized that response only reflects a small percentage of our entire community. In addition to specific questions, we provided an opportunity for participants to provide open-ended feedback at the end of that survey. As I mentioned, we explored the staggered start. So in this survey, survey participants were given two options. Oh, excuse me. They were given two options about our wellness days. Currently, those wellness days are placed next to our professional learning days in November and in February, creating a three-day staff weekend and a four-day student weekend. Survey participants affirmed that approach in November, when the PL day falls on Election Day. However, they were evenly split when asked about the February day, when provided an alternate option to spread those days out and create two, three-day weekends for students. A detailed report on the survey results is attached in your meeting materials for your The most significant topic is related to that staggered start. So a staggered start can take many different forms, but the general idea is that a school division brings back some grades on the first day of school and then phases in remaining grades on subsequent days. There are a number of reasons some divisions have adopted such an approach. This model generally aims to facilitate a really smooth transition for students entering a new building, fostering a strong sense of belonging and school connectedness, and offering a comprehensive and equitable orientation experience and start to the year for those grades starting in a new building. So this year, the Calendar Committee advanced the conversations related to the staggered start by meeting with Chesterfield and Hanover to learn more about their particular models, which are different. Based on the learnings shared, the Calendar Committee then developed its own proposal, which is what was reflected in that survey. In the HCPS proposal, half of pre-K and kindergarten students would start on Monday, August 18th, and the other half would start on Tuesday, 19th. Flip-flop. The half that comes on Monday do not attend on Tuesday, and those that attend on Tuesday do not attend on Monday. All other elementary grades, 1 through 5, would start school on Monday as usual. Additionally, under the HCPS proposal from the committee, all 6th and 9th grade students would start on Monday, August 18th, and all the other secondary students, grades 7, 8, 10, 11, and 12, would start on Tuesday. So survey participants were given information about this model, and then they were asked to rate their level of support for this specific HCPS proposal. The results from this survey, this year's calendar survey shifted slightly compared to last year's. So last year, we asked general questions about a staggered start at different levels, pre-K, K, 6th and 9th grades, and the participants responded slightly differently to each level. This year, that single question was asked about support for the entire proposal. As you can see, the number of undecided individuals decreased significantly this year. Those supporting the approach increased, and those disagreeing with the approach remained Positions on the proposed staggered start varied by different survey participant types. So as you can see, overall, about 56% of the survey participants supported the proposal, 28% opposed, and 16% remained undecided. Again, this is a decrease in the number of undecideds, but those disagreeing with the approach remained just under, at 30%. And teachers were the group that had the greatest concern out of all of those groups. The comments that were offered on the staggered start revealed more nuance about the support for and concerns with the proposal. The most significant were related to the needs of working parents, potential confusion with families, and concerns among inequities among staff. Additionally, many of our participants offered alternative proposals for a phased-in approach to the school year. So the culmination of the input you've heard about today is reflected in the recommended calendar included in the meeting materials. It maintains those diverse religious and cultural holidays, two wellness days placed next to the professional learning days, only a few half-days to allow our teachers to complete clerical work at the end of each quarter while also seeking to minimize student absences, and three professional development days for staff, that addition to the 24-25 school year based on previous feedback. At this time, the calendar does not include a staggered start, but the recommendation is to further pursue conversations with staff and families about that approach through focus groups and community conversations. And that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Coy, for the presentation and for your team's hard work in putting it together for us. We'll move forward with feedback commencing to my left with Mr. Irving.
So I don't have any questions, but I have the distinct luxury of actually doing this myself, so I can speak from experience from the past two years of it. And I think that it is both good for 6th and 9th graders who are, because I think that's the biggest change in terms of school for most children. In elementary school, you're with your teacher all day, and generally with a parent. Middle school, you get that first taste of freedom when you're in a new building and you're having to travel somewhat on your own without teacher input. And then in high school, you really have that independence where, you know, your teachers aren't even necessarily in the same place. So I think from a navigating a building standpoint, it makes students feel more comfortable. At my school, we go through a presentation that has different procedures of how we do things within our building. You get to see all of your classes within one day, so you can know where every person is. You get to meet your teacher. You can get a little heads up on what to expect. There's a standard presentation that's given in every single class by bell period, so everybody's receiving the same message once. There's team-building activities that occur during those days, and there is an assembly that takes place on like expectation setting for how high school or middle school may be different from where you just came from. From a teacher's standpoint, if you don't teach 6th or 9th graders, it's still a normal planning day for you. If you do teach them, you know, you would have them anyways. And so I think it's a good chance just to ease students in, make it a non-pressured day where they can just be in the building without having to worry about what's expected of them immediately, and just get their wits about them. And, you know, for most teachers, it just ends up being another teacher work day like it had been. So I, you know, I enjoy that we're proposing this, and just as someone who has done it, I think that it has a lot of benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Mr. Young?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Love it for middle and high school. Just questioning the elementary school, maybe you can speak to, what does this staggered start particularly do for pre-K and K? Is it just like a couple of classes starting one day and then a couple the following Tuesday?
Yep. Happy to share more about that. So in the HCPS proposal, which was different than what they heard happens in Chesterfield and Hanover, they were trying to take lessons from each. The proposal is that those students would be split in half in classrooms. Half would come Monday, half would come Tuesday, and the other half would not attend on the flip day. The benefit to that being that teachers have even fewer children to start establishing those routines, those relationships, and welcoming those students to a new building. In Chesterfield, my understanding is that it happens over the course of a whole week, and the HCPS model was just to break it up over those two days. One of the realities that was shared with our group is families don't always get that right, understandably so. And so those doors are open to students, no matter what day they're supposed to be there, or when they show up, they're welcomed into those classrooms regardless.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you. Ms. Coy, just a question about the staggered start, as I know it's not being recommended for this calendar, but obviously part of the conversation. How does that staggered start count for seat time?
That is a great question. So students, well, for the secondary level, it would not impact attendance, for example, for a 7th grader not to be there one of those days, that first day, I should say. When we're looking at the 140 clock hours for those, yep, that's what you're getting at, okay. We would, that first day of school, those hours would not be part of that entire experience. The upperclassmen would not be held accountable for not being there that day. When we talk to the other divisions about attendance and the backend support for that, their systems are set up to account for that accordingly, so that the 9th graders are accounted for attendance-wise, but nobody else is penalized.
Great. So having a staggered start would not necessarily add an extra, have to add an extra day in time. Okay. Moving to the specific calendar now instead of the broad ideas, can you share the thoughts with me on the half-day on Wednesday, 114, instead of Friday, 116? Just kind of flesh out those.
Happy to. So as we had conversations with this board in recent years, we looked at data around attendance on half-days on Fridays versus other days of the week, and tried to balance those out, recognizing that the attendance numbers rise on those Fridays that are half-days. And so the committee sought to provide balance there. We do have some at the end of the week, but not all of them, to account for that consideration.
I appreciate that and understand the need for balance, especially with the state pressure for attendance. From a family standpoint, having it on a Friday is certainly easier, especially because it happens to be next to a three-day weekend. So no directive there, just throwing that out for consideration as the team continues to peel back those layers. I also don't know the last time we had a half-day that wasn't tagged to a weekend. I think it's been a handful of years. Could be very wrong in terms of pulling our attendance data.
Yeah, I'll have to double-check. Thank you.
And then, am I correct? It seems that spring break here has moved a smidge backwards, which we heard a lot of feedback, because it's traditionally the first full week in April, correct? And so this is a little bit, but we've heard a lot of feedback asking for that with the earlier start. So if that's the case, thank you for being responsive.
Yes, and we try and calibrate that spring break with our regional counterparts and have had conversations with them about how it falls in that particular year, that it splits the week, but with the early end to the years, it's consistent with how it falls after the end of the third quarter. All to say, we are the first in the region to consider a 25-26 calendar in that regard, but have had those conversations with the region to ensure we're all lining up properly there.
I think it's great, especially when we look at end-of-the-year testing, which is, there's some that we have a window on, and there's some that are fixed right there at the beginning of May. And so giving, you know, more breathing room there, and with the earlier start and earlier end, I like that swinging to the week that includes April 1st, as opposed to the first full week of April. So that's all for me. Thank you for all the time and stakeholder feedback. The calendar is very important to the community, and so I appreciate the time and effort there.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Cancela.
Thank you. As it comes with almost every survey that we do, the response rate is so low, especially of a division of our size. Do we know what to attribute that to?
No, other than, I will say, it was nearly double what the response rate was last year when we asked about calendars. And so we saw a significant increase this year. We shifted the timing of our survey this year, in part because of how the school year is ending and backing up considerations for you all and your calendars. And so it fell at a different time of year. Part of that overlapped with our HCPS survey. There are a lot of surveys we have out there, and so I think it's fair to say sometimes that feeds into fatigue generally when it comes to these topics.
Thank you for that. I do support, I like the idea that we're exploring the staggered start, and I'm glad we're not implementing it in the fall. I do think we need greater conversation around it, because what looks good for another division may not be what works for Henrico and our families and our employees. I would like to thank Dr. Cashwell and the team for being so responsive when I requested from employee feedback if the in-person workdays and the virtual, the in-person professional learning days could be noted on the calendar. I'm appreciative of that, so that our employees know if they need to have childcare on those days. So thank you for that, as well as the inclusion of Summer Academy 25-26. Not only do our employees need that information to plan, but also our families do too. So thank you for those inclusions. I have a question. Did the group, did our group consider kindergarten and first grade? The first-grade adjustment is a big one, too, going from kindergarten to first grade. Was that considered at all? I mean, from transportation, I mean, transportation looks so different in first grade from kindergarten. It's just a question if that was considered.
Yeah. I don't know that it was a focal point of the conversation around staggered start. They were primarily looking at pre-K and K, but that would be something for us to continue looking at.
And then, is anything, I know the VHSL has their separate calendar, and I know that oftentimes our student athletes have inquired, you know, do we take into account the VHSL calendar when we're doing our school calendar? So I just thought I would ask.
As far as lining our calendar up to VHSL?
Or just looking at some of the dates?
Some of those dates that line up. Yep, we will double-check those, but yes, generally, we do. Try and look at them both.
I'm sorry. Okay. Let's see. Is there any, have you, did you hear any feedback about all the days out in October? I heard from some teachers specifically about that. Do we have any thoughts on that?
Yes, in our survey and just through the course of the Calendar Committee, we try and compile feedback we get from constituents, whether it's regarding kind of current year calendars or the calendar at hand, the way in which some of the religious holidays and wellness days and election days fall. We did get some feedback on that, and then kind of on the flip side of that, as we look ahead where dates fall differently, got feedback on how those days fall in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And I just, I do appreciate the consistency, and I know that feedback appreciated that as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Mrs. Cancela. Mrs. Shea.
Yeah, just a brief redirect. When you brought up VHSL, it reminded me, I got quite a bit of feedback this year, particularly about around VHSL near winter break, because we went so much longer into December than we typically do, that some of the teams ended up with, between sickness and travel and all those things, like six people on the basketball team for a basketball game and things like that. And so not necessarily something to move the school calendar to, but since Ms. Cancela brought it forward, as we think about kind of global activity calendar planning for our students, just some feedback that came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I only had one thought, which was around resources around the staggered times. Is there a significant increase in resources in trying to accomplish the staggered start times?
Generally speaking, not in the models that we looked at. So when we were examining this and talking to our colleagues in other divisions, looked at things like, do all of your buses still run? Are the cafeterias up and running? Yes, generally, it's the same amount of resources, but in some cases with smaller subsets of students, teachers are still working that day, staff are still in buildings as they would be. I don't think, and I'm thinking through our conversations together, that there were any additional resources that were necessary that we discussed as a committee.
Thank you for your response, and thank you and your team for the overall presentation. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you, and we'll look forward to continuing that conversation as we move towards approval of the school year 25-26 calendar at a future meeting. Our next update, we're so pleased to provide the board a progress report, if you will, a program update related to our dual-language Spanish immersion program. Dr. Hughes will introduce members of her team who have joined her.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Atkins, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Joining me today is Taylor Snow, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, and together we will share an update on the Henrico County Public Schools Dual Language Immersion Program, also known as DLI, at Holiday Elementary School. Before we begin, though, I would like to recognize Stephanie Stockman. She is our Ed Specialist. Stephanie, come on over and have a seat. She's our Ed Specialist who directly supports dual-language immersion program, and she's specialist extraordinaire, as I'm sure you well imagine. As shown on the screen, the Dual Language Immersion Program directly aligns to the strategic goal of academic excellence. The primary goal of the program is to ensure students are provided the learning experiences they need to become biliterate global citizens who are able to adapt, adjust, and apply what they know and can do when they graduate from Henrico County Public Schools. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Snow.
Thank you. So today, we're here to share with you HCPS's journey with dual-language immersion, provide updates pointing to the past and ongoing successes of the program so far, and map out a vision for the program going forward. In short, we want to tell you a little bit about what dual-language immersion is, what it's all about, the accomplishments of the program in its first three years, and where we're going in subsequent years. Dual-language immersion is a teaching and learning model that asks students to engage meaningfully in an academic context with two languages. At the DLI program at Holiday Elementary, students engage with aligned curriculum instruction in both program languages on a daily basis. This means that every day, students are engaged in literacy-rich language instruction that invites them to forge big-picture understandings about language that enable the application of Henrico learner-profile skills and attributes across both academic and social contexts. It's also important to note that this instruction is not offered in lieu of English-language learner services. All students in the program receive the full continuum of supports necessary for them to thrive. Understanding, of course, that all research supports an early start to language acquisition, this year, we've added pre-K to our DLI program in service of HCPS's youngest learners. Class and social time at the PK level is structured in a way that gives students an opportunity to engage in meaningful second language acquisition while they grow as collaborators and global citizens. Given the innovative and unique nature of the program, it's valuable here to explore what a day in the life of one of our DLI students looks like. And in Henrico, we follow a two-way dual-language program. Two-way means that classrooms are made up of a balance of students proficient in the partner language, in this case, Spanish, and English-speaking peers. In grades K through 2, students are divided across two classrooms, spending half of their day learning English literacy skills and academic content in English, and the other half, learning Spanish literacy skills and math and Spanish. In both classrooms, students are learning their non-native language through immersive instructional experiences, targeted language development, and most valuably, the support of their peers. The opportunity to participate in dual-language immersion is offered to all students zone for Holiday Elementary upon initial registration in kindergarten. The bilingual registrar at Holiday discusses the DLI program with enrolling kindergarten families who make the choice to opt in. Once the list of interested students is determined, DLI staff collaborates with Mrs. Stockman to select students via a lottery system that balances native language backgrounds and ensures equal and fair representation from across the Holiday community. On average, over the last three years, we have been able to serve approximately 90% of interested families. Because of the linguistic rigor in Spanish required for DLI students, English-only speaking students may opt in in kindergarten and in first grade if seats are available. The success of this program is not only acknowledged within the Holiday community, but families from outside of the attendance zone frequently inquire about access to similar programming. So we've discussed the structure and student composition of our program, and while we're proud of the innovative structures we've created and the equity of access we've been able to ensure, we know that innovation and equity cannot be the only needles moved by this work. With everything we do, we strive to have a positive impact on student academic growth and achievement metrics, and I'm proud to say that the Holiday Elementary DLI team has delivered on that front, and I'm proud now to share some specifics around the amazing achievements of our DLI students. One might expect that, given the fact that our DLI students are only receiving half of their instruction in English, that we may be sacrificing performance on normed ELA assessments or clarity around the application of numeracy. But quite to the contrary, our budding bilinguals are not only growing as readers and mathematicians, they're doing so at a rate that's on or above the rate of their peers. Even though the students may not spend as much time engaged in reading and writing in English as their peers, they are spending more time thinking deeply about language and how it's applied in truly authentic settings. What this indicates is that the quality of the instructional time across our two partner languages is so rich that our students are achieving and often exceeding all of the goals we would have for our single-language classrooms while also enabling life-ready Our approach to biliteracy in DLI not only gives students an opportunity to read and write in two languages, but embeds time where students are asked to think deeply in both languages, think about how they apply language, and the role it plays across their academic journey. Biliteracy builds a conceptual understanding of language patterns while asking students to think critically and creatively about the way they communicate. Learning to read in Spanish is different than learning to read in English, and understanding these differences is an invaluable learning experience in building biliteracy. After a fall and winter series of diagnostic testing via iReady, which is our digital elementary ELA and math tool, the DLI math data at Holiday is as impressive as the reading data. I want to pause here and make a very important point of clarification, because there are incredibly impressive contexts underlying that data. The reading diagnostic was administered to all DLI students in English, no matter their first language. The math diagnostic was administered to all DLI students in Spanish, no matter their first language. So in the research, the evidence, and in the spirit of DLI, students were assessed in both languages, giving equal advantages and disadvantages. in both languages, giving equal advantages and disadvantages of demonstrating their learning in their home language and in their partner language. Another aspect of DLI that makes it so powerful is its capacity to build meaningful cross-cultural experiences that increase student engagement and, as a result, attendance, while dismantling some of the barriers that can make families with different language backgrounds hesitant to engage with their students' school. Our attendance, our attendance metrics bear this out, as across all DLI levels, students are 97% less likely to be chronically absent. The data is broken down here by grade level and paints a truly astounding picture of engagement in Holiday Elementary's DLI program. And while the quantitative data is powerful, just one visit to DLI classes at Holiday provides an even more compelling argument that learner-centered communities that prioritize students' learning from one another create incredibly powerful experiences for our students. In addition, you'll see the clear impacts on learning that can be forged when students can see themselves, their language, and their culture reflected in their instruction. We also know that meaningful engagement doesn't stop with students. In order to fully capitalize on the promise of dual-language immersion, our DLI team is active in engaging families. We welcome our English and Spanish-speaking families to the quarterly DLI parent advisory meetings and DLI coffee talks. We highlight DLI events and instructional spotlights in the monthly newsletter, and we have an ongoing partnership and site visits with the Spanish Immersion and Global Citizenship Center at JR Tucker High School, plus other whole-school opportunities to bring the community together. Extending the inclusive community of learners that forms the foundation for DLI classes to DLI families has helped to engage families for whom language and culture barriers may have proven a hurdle in the past. Attendance from Spanish-speaking DLI families at the community events continues to increase, and as a result, we continue to forge the same cross-cultural connections with families that we're seeing with our students. And while, as I said, we're thrilled about the quantitative data pointing toward the program successes, some of the qualitative data, specifically the things our students are saying about their experiences in the program, stand out as well. A family noted that their English-speaking student speaks Spanish whenever she can. She tries to use it with her dad at home and is the first kid in the neighborhood to try her Spanish with others. Another noted that their student goes home and searches through the HCPS Learning App Library for learning opportunities in both languages. Others extolled the increased self-confidence academically and socially that has been cultivated in their students as a result of their language learning. And our students note, and I'm quoting students directly, so bear with me, you'll see, "Learning in two languages is fun, and I love the different sounds that I learn," one student said. Another added, "Cuando mi mama no sepa que están diciendo, yo la puedo traducir," which is, "When my mom doesn't understand what they're saying, I can help." Not only is our community noticing these successes, but in September of 2023, Holiday's DLI program was awarded a National Association of Counties Award for its innovative, community-oriented programming. And as I bring the presentation to a close, we're excited to share a few additional updates as to our path toward expansion. While we're extremely excited about our successes, they highlight the urgency for developing a long-range, sustainable approach for dual-language immersion instruction at the upper elementary level and the middle school level. It's important, going into next school year, as we add third grade to the program, to acknowledge the significance of that being the point where our standards ask our students to transition from learning to read to reading to learn. This pivotal transition is one that we don't take lightly, and we are confident that the literacy and engagement metrics we've discussed earlier in this presentation will continue through the upper elementary and middle grades moving forward. I'm happy to note that already, our PK-12 world language specialist, Mrs. Stephanie Stockman, right there, has begun the critical project planning work for our middle school expansion to ensure that our cohorts can continue in this learning model going forward. And of course, as this presentation draws to a close, it's vital to acknowledge the team that has both built and nurtured this community of learners, our DLI teacher and admin team at Holiday Elementary, including Principal Brooke Givens, who's given here tonight, there we are, and Megan Lindeman, the program supervising associate principal who is not able to join us tonight. Through their combined efforts and collective commitment to the DLI community, they have lived the Henrico County Schools' mission by ensuring that even our youngest learners are able to access a unique learning environment where the right to achieve and the supports to succeed are so foundational. Thank you, and we are happy to entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. We're gonna jump right on in, and I'm gonna commence to my right with Mrs. Cancelo.
I don't really have many questions. The presentation and the results of this program really speak for itself, and I'd like to thank Dr. Cashwell and the team for supporting this program at Holiday. It really is tremendous, and I know that you actually had experience with this program before you came to Henrico Schools, did you not?
I did, I had the honor of serving at an elementary school as principal for our language immersion program, and of course, what I see here in Henrico is even above and beyond and exceeding every expectation anyone could ever have for a program, and just incredible. But you know, what I know about programs from my own personal experience and doing research, both nationally and internationally, is the tremendous gains that we're seeing at the program in Holiday don't surprise me, because with this kind of an instructional model, that's what the research bears out over and over again, and it is a testament to how well they've implemented this program and the many benefits for students.
And I know I asked, in probably December, when we received our multilingual presentation about what's going on across Henrico Schools, but we have not narrowed down yet a location for the middle school expansion. Or have we?
That's correct. No, we're still working through those details. Now, because this program serves students zoned for Holiday, you know, we're understanding what that feeder pattern looks like as we're making those choices.
Okay, and then, at what point do we consider expanding the program?
Beyond Holiday.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an excellent question, and certainly something we're all very interested in. So, this is our first foray into dual-language immersion in Henrico County at the elementary level, and looking at how that'll grow to the middle school level, and then certainly there are some conversations about how we might scale that up, or even look at other languages beyond Spanish, where the homeschool community may benefit from something like this. You know, as you can imagine, there are a number of challenges related to staffing that go along with this, so you're looking for someone who is licensed to teach elementary school, in this case, and/or the content in middle school, who's also a native speaker. And so, it's certainly not an insurmountable challenge, as you can see here, but it is something to be cognizant of when we think about scaling up, but certainly something the team's already begun thinking about replicability.
That's, that's all I have, except for it's just a tremendous program, and I thank our principal for joining us today. So, that's all I have, Ms. Atkins.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much. It is rare that I am surprised by something in Henrico, because as I said three weeks ago, in Henrico, we don't just do things different, we do it better, and that's my expectation, and this has just surpassed all of my expectations, even, you know, looking at the presentation beforehand, but the details you filled in, Dr. Snow, and the way you did them, just a very fruitful presentation, and with each piece, I just became more pleasantly surprised, and after hearing this presentation, I just feel so incapable. This is beyond any of my abilities as an educator, and I'm just in awe. Like, I am speechless and in awe. I know Dr. Cashwell was very intentional in where to place this program and how to develop this program so that it was community-driven, and sharing how it's building bridges within the community. That's a game changer, not only for our students within the buildings, but our community as a whole, and we know strong communities build strong schools, and here we're seeing strong schools build strong communities. And so, I mean, really, my only question mark was around staffing, which I know is a challenge everywhere. So do, as we look at the continued rollout, do we foresee being able to find the right staff for the continued expansion?
I think definitely. So, one thing, in talking with Stephanie, you know, as our, just as our student body is getting more diverse and are coming to us with language backgrounds different than maybe what we would consider traditional or what we were used to, our staff are also coming to us from different language backgrounds. The pool of our candidates is diverse in a way that matches that. So going forward, not only would we be talking about just the natural diversification of our applicant pool, but students who are learning in this mode, students who are learning as part of the dual-language immersion, or the immersion center, rather, at JR Tucker, are going to be students who, for whom this sort of teaching, this sort of work, is going to be appealing. So, we feel really good about our pipeline for now, just based upon hiring seasons in the past and sort of already what we're looking at for next year.
That's awesome. And then, just one question about the absentee rate. When we're looking at the reduction in chronic absenteeism, who is our kind of great group? Is that the rest of the students at Holiday? Is that the rest of the students across Henrico?
Those are the rest of the students at Holiday.
That's, that speaks volumes, because you're looking within the same community. So, just tremendous work. And Dr. Snow, we love having you as a regular part of the podium these days.
I love being here, I'll keep coming back.
Thank you all for your time and your absolutely extraordinary work.
Mr. Young.
I'd like to echo my colleagues, Dr. Snow, Dr. Hughes, amazing presentation today. I'm gonna use this as a learning opportunity, just to ask some questions. I see we're launching third grade. Do our second graders automatically go into the immersion program in third grade?
They'll continue through the cohort all the way, as far as we've mapped out. So, that's the primary goal of adding middle school as well, is to ensure that these students can keep learning in this cohort.
And how does this look, I know we haven't gotten to middle school, but how does that look when they're taking foreign language now, with, I mean, basically five years of Spanish under their belt?
Yeah, so at that point, too, I mean, we have other language options that are open as well. So, French, we have some schools in the county that offer German, many who offer Latin. So, it just, it opens up the opportunity to, I mean, in addition to being biliterate by the time, you know, we're 11, 12, 13 years old, also offering them the opportunity to explore world languages that are outside of what they're doing.
In addition, Stephanie's mind, I'm sure, is already going in that, to your point, when our students get to middle school, their first year of Spanish, if you will, in middle school will look much different than a student who's just exploring Spanish the first time. So we would make sure that the programming and the curriculum match the students' needs.
Right, that's what I was getting at. Okay, awesome. I don't think I have any more questions. I think that was it, I just wanted to kind of learn more. I do have one more. Is it the entry just pre-K and K, or can we still get in in first grade?
Kindergarten and first grade, pre-K, kindergarten and first grade for students who are speaking English at home, students whose native language is Spanish. We have more flexibility with when we can incorporate those students, because we would be giving them an English immersive experiences regardless of how we scheduled those students. So, when we are able, we are able to accommodate students whose native language is Spanish a little farther into the program.
And certainly, we look on a case-by-case basis as well, is to, we had a student who came in second, third, or fourth grade, and they had different experiences. We want to make sure that we're preparing them for success, but we do certainly look at each student to ensure that we, they're fit for the program, and it wouldn't be overwhelming for them to move in.
All right, thank you so much, manager.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Irving.
Yes, again, I'll echo what my colleague said, this is amazing. As someone who teaches a lot of multi-language learners, I certainly appreciate this, especially looking at the chronically absent numbers and the huge reduction, I think that makes perfect sense. I was having a conversation with a Spanish teacher the other day, who wants to potentially teach economics and personal finance as well, and teach our English-language learners, because he speaks Spanish, and it would make sense to have someone who could speak to those students in their native language and in English as well, and how that could help in a traditionally very difficult subject for those students and show improvement. I think this kind of confirms it at a younger age. So, my question becomes then, would it be possible to bring something like this to high school, especially in the targeted hard, because some subjects are harder than others for certain students? And I think that we would be missing on a huge opportunity to just look at this at the younger levels and not take it also to the higher levels where high school students are more likely to be chronically absent than anybody else. And I think of this, there's, I seen a reason why this reduction probably couldn't occur at those levels as well, and, you know, I think anything that helps keeps the kid in school would be great. So, for me, when would this, when could we have thoughts and processes about creating this at the high school level?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly want to use the lessons we're learning about, not just this specific program, but the implications if, when we see students thinking deeply about language and the way that they're at, they're being asked to do, what does that, what does that lead, like, what results is that helping drive? And we want to make sure that we're exploring what that can look like at the high school level, too. We certainly, we have the center at Tucker that I referenced, which is a slightly different model as well, we're not, it wouldn't be, it's not the two-way model exactly that we outlined for Holiday, but we had that opportunity as well, and we certainly, especially because of the partnership we've already established with students from the Holiday Center visiting Tucker, we hope that that pathway kind of gets forged through that approach also.
So, if we were to expand this to other schools, what would, we think would be a reasonable cutoff in terms of population demographics to make it, because the resources are frankly hard to find to do these programs, so I'm just curious of what we would consider maybe reasonable in the future for?
I mean, I think part of the power of the program is in the balance, the language balance. So, and I know Holiday was selected very intentionally because we would be able to ensure that language balance across individual classes. So, generally speaking, we shoot for that sort of that 50-50 language representation, because then you're really, you're reaping all the benefits and the social interactions, too. And you have this true sharing of cultures and not sort of one student or a handful who are, who are sort of othered by the experience. So we want to make sure it's 50-50, as close as we can get to it, so that would be what we would be looking for as we consider that.
Yeah, that's reasonable. So what do you think we can do to improve the recruitment for the folks that would be the actual teachers in this? Like, what can we do? And how can we do a better job of identifying these folks perhaps elsewhere, and then actively recruiting them to come here? Because I think, you know, maybe this is unique and would be something that teachers elsewhere would be interested in, like, how can we target them, identify them, and then actively pursue them?
So I think, you know, as Mrs. Shea shared earlier, I think this program is getting a lot of recognition, because it is a two-way program, and I think, you know, we have won some awards, people are talking about it, sharing our success, we have data to show that it's working. So I think from a recruitment standpoint, we have a lot of data points to show that it's very successful. We work very closely with human resource, and we work with companies called Participate and other companies who really help us recruit teachers who have their licenses in elementary, but, or, and as we get to middle school, who are licensed to teach middle school courses, but who have that native language. So I think it's just continuing to get the word out and recruiting. So, you know, as Taylor said, Stephanie's been looking now to middle school, she'll start doing those recruiting efforts now to start to cast a very wide net. So I think it's just continuing to get the word out, really selling the program, but looking at the data to show the success, and just continue to always be forward-thinking and not be waiting at the last minute to look for teachers who qualify.
Yes, well, if there's, if there's anything that the five of us can do, please let us know, and I think that we all, it seems that we all view this as a success, because it's hard to deny it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well done, not that you needed the mic, because I think you heard me with it off, but I'll say it for a third time, that this is well done. When we are looking at programs and implementation, I think this is such a success story. One of the things that really was popping into top of mind, I tried a little bit not to look at Mrs. Shea, because I think I was feeling her emotion, seriously, I was feeling some of her emotion, and being a little bit surprised at what I learned, and this is more than institutional knowledge, I would say, it's also more than experience, there's some real heart, because you're embracing the entire experience, the experience of the child, the experience of staff, the experience of administration, the experience of community and beyond, and that level of embracing lets me know that we're looking at culture very deeply at Holiday. We're looking at equity very deeply at Holiday, because the results speak to it. You know, the phrase is, the proof is in the pudding, I think the proof is at Holiday. And if we're looking at examples of how to do it, I think this is one. That leads me to a very specific question, however, which is, we're very transparent as a system when we have challenges. I would like for us to embrace celebrations a little bit more. I want to understand how we are giving this good news across Henrico County, so that it doesn't just have to be a holiday experience, it can be an experience for all of Henrico it can be an experience for all of Henrico County. So can you share with me how we're sharing this information out across Henrico County and beyond?
So, you know, I think we are using our, the preferred methods of communication that families are used to receiving, such as our binder and, you know, our media, our website. You know, we have really focused the last several years on celebrating within the Holiday community, and not that we haven't wanted to spread wide and far, but I think we do have to be cognizant of the fact that right now, our Holiday students are the ones who are able to engage in the programming. And so, you know, you want to be, you want to celebrate and cast a wide net with information about the program, but we also want to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that our students at Holiday are the ones who can tap into this program right now. So it's a little bit of a delicate balance. We want to celebrate and spread far and wide with all of our typical media outlets, both within our community and wider. But I think our focus of late, or the last few years, has really been within the Holiday community. But we will certainly work on spreading far and wide to our whole community, especially as we're looking to extend to middle school and to other schools.
Right, that's where I'm headed. Because if you, you know, one way to predict success is your vision of it. If your vision is bigger, then you have to aspire to share much larger. Understanding it's a balance, absolutely. And that's where your expertise and your team's expertise come in. But I would encourage you to think if we're expanding to middle school, we don't have to wait to get to middle school to share the good news. We want to share that ahead of time because we want to bring in folks to understand it before it comes to them.
Sure, absolutely.
So I would just encourage you to just think about it.
Yes, oh, no, I appreciate the feedback. And of course, we want our families who are in the program now to know that there are pathways for them as they move forward.
And beyond, sorry, beyond the division, Ms. Stockman has been incredibly active in the DLI, like statewide and national community. And one of my first days in this job, I got to go and visit a world-renowned speaker that she got to, you know, the Marriott on Glen Side. So she's been very active in that community, and that's been a good platform, both for recruiting and, I think, for sharing our successes.
I would love, I hate to put you on the spot, and I don't like using the word hate, but I guess that lets you know what I'm about to say. If you would like an opportunity to share, I've been watching you the whole time. And if there are some words that you would like to share, I just want to welcome you to do that. You don't have to, but I'd love to be inclusive because of the work that's been done and give you your round of applause as well. So would you like to, is the question?
It's the team. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's how you know it's good news, because the response is, "It's the team." But we also wanted to provide you that opportunity. Shout out to the principal in the back. So thank you so much. Again, well done, Dr. Cashwell.
I echo all the gratitude thanks. And while I am closer to the work and get to hear about it more regularly, I still have the moments of awe and wow up here listening to the progress update as it was shared with us today. So thank you so much for the work that's done each and every day in the school, the central support team, and for providing the board the overview. We'll look forward to continuing to keep the board updated on future progress and celebrating the good news from this work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, my next items are consent items, and so therefore, they can be taken in a block.
Colleagues, are there any questions on the consent items before we move forward? All right, is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept, adopt, approve, and/or award items 4.01 through 4.06 on the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Those items in block, and that block has been accepted. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. Citizens were invited to submit comments for the board's review by noon on Wednesday, March 13, 2024, utilizing a designated link on the HCPS website. We are grateful for the participation of citizens who took advantage of this opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their valuable input. Comments have been compiled and submitted to the board ahead of today's meeting. Furthermore, these comments have been made accessible through Board Docs for reference. The next item on the agenda pertains to unfinished business. Colleagues, I invite you to address any outstanding matters at this time. Hearing none, we'll move forward. The next item is new business. Board members, do you have any new business? Hearing none, we'll move forward to the last item on the agenda, which is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting is on Thursday, March 28, 2024. The work session is at 3:00 p.m., followed by the monthly meeting at 6:30 p.m. in the New Bridge Auditorium. Please note, the meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.